Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is Liz Fuller. I'm Senior Community Library Manager of the Brentwood Library. On behalf of the Contra Costa County Library System, I want to welcome you to tonight's forum. We've worked closely with the League of Women Voters, the County Elections Department, and CCTV to bring this program to our community. It will stream live on Facebook and will be available online after the program on the Library and County Elections Department websites, as well as the League of Women Voters Edge website. And I do want to give a little shout-out to the man behind the camera in the back. Rich Hall is here, and he's the one that took the award-winning photo on your ballot pamphlet booklet that you got in the mail. And it's a picture of Patrick Reamer doing Storytime at the Pleasant Hill Library. So, library all around. Please join me in welcoming our moderator for this evening, Ann Flynn, from the League of Women Voters. Ann is the immediate past president of the League of Women Voters of Diablo Valley, and she's a former elected board member of the Walnut Creek School Board and retired from the U.S. Department of State as a Foreign Service Officer. Welcome, Ann.
Thank you, Liz, and thank you, everybody. That was a nice welcome. Our forum this evening is to present candidates running for the Brentwood City Council. There are two open seats and five candidates. The League is a nonpartisan organization that does not support or oppose any candidate. We are here tonight as part of our key mission to educate and inform voters. Just now, each candidate has pulled a number to determine opening speaking order. Closing statements will be in the reverse order. During the question-and-answer portion, I will alternate whom I call upon first to avoid giving any candidate an advantage or a disadvantage. Each candidate will have the opportunity to have two rebuttals of one minute each. So just ask me if you want one of the rebuttals, and it's yours. To our audience here in the auditorium, remember, if you have a question you would like to ask the candidates, please write it on a 3x5 card and hand it to a volunteer who will get it up to me. Questions will be screened to avoid duplicates. Each candidate will have one minute to answer the question. Personal attacks are not permitted. Statements made about other candidates must be from the public record or will not be allowed. Each speaker will be timed, and we will give everyone a 15-second warning sign. So timers in the front row, if you'd hold up your 15 seconds, it's a yellow card. And then if you come to the end of your time, a red card will go up, and we'll let you finish your sentence. So we won't just completely cut you off, but we'll be gracious about keeping the time. So for the audience here, this forum is being taped, and it's particularly important that you turn off your cellphones now, and candidates also. Got your cellphones off?
Done.
If you haven't already done so. And please, no unauthorized recordings or videos. And we want to remind you not to cheer or applaud any statement. Now we'll proceed with one-minute opening remarks, beginning with Joel Bryant.
Good evening. My name's Joel Bryant. I am a resident of the city of Brentwood since 2001. My wife and two kids and I moved up here from Los Angeles. I was raised on a ranch in Oklahoma, and so it was a bit of a shock moving to Los Angeles, and this is much more like home. And I have been on city council for the last eight years. I'm also a chaplain with the Brentwood Police Department, and I work for a church here in town as a pastor. And my goal, living here, is to make sure that future generations get to enjoy the safety, the peace, and the great community that we have in Brentwood now, and make it as good as possible in the future.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Olga Vidriales.
Good evening, and thank you to our host and members of the audience. My name is Olga Vidriales. I moved to Brentwood with my family in 2003. We are original homeowners in Shadow Lakes. I graduated from Mills College with a BA in Business and Pre-Law. I am currently a real estate agent with Interro. I have 27 years in bank management experience, including branch manager for Travis Credit Union in Brentwood in Antioch. I have served this community for over a decade. I am currently an officer with Brentwood Neighborhood Committee. I served as president of the Rotary Club of Brentwood with the distinction of being the first elected president of our club. I've also been involved with the Chamber since 2005. I am passionate about all things Brentwood, especially our quality of life. I am honored to be endorsed by our Brentwood Police Officers Association Assemblyman Jim Frazier, Mayor Bob Taylor, and Citizen of the Year Kevin King. With your support and vote, I promise to work tirelessly to protect the quality of life in Brentwood. Thank you.
Thank you. Johnny Rodriguez.
Oh, man. Where do we start? I just want to... For me, it's a great honor to be here tonight. I remember growing up in this community. I've been here since 1971. I was born and raised in this community. I used to walk in this park before this building was built, so for me, it's a great honor to be here in your presence, to even have the opportunity to speak. Currently, I sit on the Brentwood School Board, I'm the Board President of the Brentwood Union School District. I've been there for four years. I also am the founder and executive director of a youth organization called One Day at Time. I've been working and volunteering in this community for over 25 years. I dedicated my life to this community many years ago, when I wanted to give back and build my own nonprofit. So in saying that, I mean, my heart, my soul is Brentwood. My mother and father went to school here. My sons go to school here. I went to school here. I graduated from this district and from this community. And what I would like to bring is a fresh perspective when it comes to this community, and diversify the conversations when it comes to this board and to the city, to help represent the whole community. And thank you.
Thank you very much. And next is John Fink.
Good evening, everyone. My name is John Fink. I am a local Realtor and property manager. I am also the chairperson for the Brentwood Planning Commission, and I have served on the Planning Commission for the city of Brentwood for eight-plus years. My wife and I came to Brentwood in 2003. We're actually going to have our 15th anniversary this month. We came here because it was the middle of our commute. I was working in Livermore. I was in the credit union industry for 20 years, and my wife was a professional photographer working out of Concord. When I came to Brentwood, the first thing I knew when I started my real estate business here was I needed to be a member of the community. And the thing that I did was I just threw myself out there. I was president of the Heritage High School Parents Club. I was also on the volunteer in the Brentwood Police Department, and I've been happy to serve as a member of this community for many years. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And our final speaker is Mike Jones.
Thank you, and thank everybody for coming out tonight. So my name is Mike Jones. I was born and raised in Washington, DC. My father was a graphical engineer at NBC News, and my mother was an elementary school teacher. I graduated from Old Dominion University in 2006 with a Bachelor of Science in Business Administration with a concentration in commercial real estate, finance, and investment. I moved to California in 2010. My current career is managing commercial real estate. As I said earlier, I'm the current Senior General Manager at the Streets of Brentwood, where you might have remembered, we brought you the Big Chill Ice Arena last year, as well as the Bay Area's largest Easter egg hunt. My platform is economic development. That's where my strengths lie. Retail is struggling in Brentwood. Seventy percent of our people that work actually commute, you know, more than two to three hours a day. So my goal is to bring jobs here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. For the next 30 minutes or so, I'll ask questions. I'll do my best to ensure that each candidate answers an equal number of questions. And the first question goes to Olga Vidriales. Olga Vidriales, thank you. What is your plan or vision for economic development and job growth?
Well, job growth is crucial right now because we're a little bit... We're quite behind our housing growth. I'm very passionate about the vision that our city council and our city manager and staff have started with the priority area, one, with the goal of bringing more commercial, ready-built, commercial properties to Brentwood. We are probably one of the only cities that have fiber optic already installed in California and certainly across the nation, and I think that's going to be great in attracting high-tech, high-paying jobs to Brentwood, which again is very, very necessary.
Thank you very much. Johnny Rodriguez, same question?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, those are very important things when it comes to the community and offering jobs and opportunities to our community. So I also think that PA-1 is going to be a great opportunity for our community in regards to our economic growth and bringing new jobs and opportunities to, not only to the people moving out here, but also our young people as well. So we're looking forward to hopefully seeing that come out in fruition, and yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mike Jones?
So as far as I'm concerned, you look at Brentwood, back in 2000, there were only about 20,000 residents, 21,000, somewhere in that range. And then here we are in 2018 with 64,000 residents. We have a beautiful bedroom community. We don't have a lot of jobs. Most of the jobs that are there, like in retail, like at the streets, most of those people get paid minimum wage. So I look at nurses, firefighters, policemen, other folks that literally travel two to three hours a day. And I used to do it when I managed Bay Fair Center out in San Leandro. And when I was recruited to the Streets of Brentwood a couple of years ago, I found it to be amazing to have my quality of life back. We have a beautiful city, but for a whole lot of people in our city, they leave at 6:00 in the morning, they don't get back till 7:00. So they don't even really get to enjoy all the jewels that we have in Brentwood because they're never here. How do you get quality of life back? Bring jobs here.
Thank you. Joel Bryant?
Well, I think there's two parts to this component. As someone that's been on city council, we worked for two years to get our general plan updated that incorporated the PA-1 specific plan. We do have advantages of fiber optic connectivity at gigabit speeds. We're one of two cities in the state of California that have that, one of 14 cities in the United States that have that. So we have some really attractive components to our community that will bring tech jobs to this area, especially when they see the quality of life. But as far as economic development is concerned, I can't... I think we can't afford to overlook our current small businesses here in town as well. I think we need to make more efforts to strengthen, encourage, and help our businesses work together to keep our funds that are leaving town in town, in addition to bringing new jobs.
Thank you. And John Fink?
I was on the working group for Plan Area 1, which is what I think is the last great economic development opportunity for the city of Brentwood, where our projections look at over 8,000 high-paying jobs. I don't necessarily see just tech jobs. I see a balance of technology jobs, but I also look at an opportunity for us to bring agricultural jobs through agricultural research. We have a jewel in this area with the Agricultural Corps, and I feel that with partnership with UC Davis and other universities, we can bring those high-research jobs to Plan Area 1 in order to meet the needs of our job requirements. I want to reverse the commute. I want to keep people in Brentwood. I want to keep them from commuting outside the city of Brentwood. And I think PA-1 and the goals that we set in this project that we've worked on for the last year are definitely going to do great things for the city of Brentwood.
Thank you. Mr. Fink will stay with you for the next question. There are a number of questions about small business. So would you like to expand on your philosophy of growing the small business here in Brentwood?
Absolutely. I am also considered a small business. Our firm only has four employees. We are located right here in downtown Brentwood, but I also feel that the city of Brentwood could do a better job of incubating those businesses. Over 80% of the businesses in Brentwood are small businesses, and I think it's important that we do our best to bring those people up. I know that our city manager has been working on a project where we'll be able to have a workspace here in this building, where we'll be able to incubate those businesses and help them grow into larger businesses, maybe businesses that'll be large enough to take over a space in PA-1. That is one of the things that we're looking at through this entire project in bringing those jobs here to Brentwood. Partnerships with LMC and the Liberty Union High School District will also help with vocational jobs, and I think that's another opportunity that we have to help those kids that may not be college-bound, but definitely an opportunity for them to learn a trade so they will also be able to contribute to the city as a whole with a great job in some sort of trade.
Thank you. Ms. Vidriales, more about small business?
Small business is indeed the backbone of Brentwood. I truly understand that. I consider myself a small business owner, independent real estate agent, although my brokerage has 70 employees, 70 full-time agents. I agree with... I love the job that Gus Vina, the city of Brentwood is already implementing with small business. We're trying to bring some, I think they would be called satellite offices, to City Hall, where you can come in, drop in on a daily basis, and run your business out of City Hall. I think that would be a great advantage for small business.
Thank you. Mr. Bryant?
I think that we can take advantage of some of the infrastructure that's already here, working with the Chamber of Commerce and the Downtown Business Coalition, to help focus on what we are able to provide to each other through small businesses. That way, we don't have to lose the funds that are going out, the tax revenue going out. I think if we follow that process, instead of raising taxes every time the city has a shortfall in revenue, we can keep some of the tax revenue in simply by doing business with each other and encouraging local businesses to do that as well.
Thank you. And Mr. Jones?
Okay, so for me, especially from a real estate perspective, if you go up and down Lone Tree, if you look at, like, Garen Ranch, you look at a whole lot of business centers out here, there's a lot of vacancies. Even at the streets, we have more vacancies than we should have. A lot of these retail tenants are struggling, especially the mom-and-pop ones that have... We have places like Dory and Maid. They're working their butt off, but they're not making, like, ridiculous amounts of money like they like to. Same thing with even some of the national tenants. So that's the whole point when I say smart growth, bringing these tech hubs or bringing some kind of business parks. They actually stabilize those small businesses because they're able to make sure that, you know, lunchtime, what do people do? They spend money. We have a bunch of our folks that go to Walnut Creek, Oakland, spend their lunch money there, spend their Target money there, come back home, go to sleep. But we don't have the same people doing that coming this way. So we're missing out on revenue, and a lot of our businesses that could have catering orders every day and other stuff can't do that because we just don't have those major type of companies out here.
Thank you. And Mr. Rodriguez?
Yeah, I think small businesses are important. I think there's things that have been in place that they're trying to do to work with small businesses, to keep them in the community and keep them in downtown. So I think one of the things that we need to do is to do some type of, not research, but to talk to them and find out what is working and what's not working. Why are we continuing to lose a lot of small businesses in the community, and how we could figure out to support them even more? So I know that's something I would work really close with the city manager, but also the departments, to be able to figure out, how can we do better as a city to be able to collaborate and partner with some of these small businesses so they can last within the city of Brentwood?
Thank you. And we'll stay with you, Mr. Rodriguez, for the next question. We know that cannabis is legal in California. What is your opinion of cannabis here in this city? Are you open to allowing a business in the future?
I can't say if I am or not. I'll be honest with you. I don't think that I've... One, I've never been asked that question, so it's something totally new to me. My thing is, is that I would obviously need to do a lot of research and talk with the people that are in position, that have a lot more expertise than I do in regards to that. So personally, myself, to give you an answer currently would be pretty much out of line. So my goal would be, if I was at city council, is to be able to sit down with the different individuals that would have their expertise and the knowledge when it comes to cannabis and also bringing those into the community. So currently, I couldn't say yes or no, but I also would know that I would do my due diligence to make sure I do the right research to figure out if that would be something positive or negative for this community.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Well, it's an interesting question. Ultimately, I think we should put it up to a vote to the citizens, whether it's an actual ballot or whether it's some kind of system we set up to survey residents. But from my perspective, old-school Brentwood, no, they don't want it. New-school Brentwood, a lot of the same commuters that aren't here a lot of times, they do want it. So I look at it like, if 70% of the city wants it, then that's the direction we should go. If 70% don't want it, then we shouldn't build one.
Mr. Fink?
We, a few years ago, were looking at the municipal code, and we, on the Planning Commission, had made the recommendation for approval, and it went to the city council, where we said, "Let's wait. Let's see. Let's not have this in Brentwood at the time being." And I think that was a wise decision because we have... We've got a lot of neighbors around us that are looking at this, and I think it was a wise decision for us to hold off before we made the decision to allow dispensaries in the city of Brentwood. We wanted to wait and see what the tax ramifications would be, ramifications to crime. I personally didn't feel like it was something that we needed to jump into right away, and let's get some history behind us to see what the other municipalities are having to deal with this particular situation, and then we can make a decision on what it is that will benefit the city or the citizens of Brentwood ultimately.
Thank you. Mr. Bryant?
Well, like John said, I was on that decision-making body that said to wait, and I'm glad we did. I've spent a good bit of time at the state, talking to the growers, talking to the Congress and Senate, talking to attorneys, talking to banking. And at a state level, we don't have a handle on all of the challenges of a situation that is a cash-only product, that the dangers of depositing $5 million in cash at a time, which is exactly what's going on every day, is something that we don't have a handle on as a state, much less as a community. I think it's too early to have a good idea of what the safe path forward with that is at this time. I do want to continue to watch and wait, listening to the growers and the state and the banks and the attorney. They're all saying that in the next two or three years, there's not going to be any great changes, and they're working out at a state level to try to put a structure in place to make everyone safe in the process. So I think we need to wait until we get a safer, better idea of what's going to go on with it.
Thank you. And Ms. Vidriales?
Thank you. I understand the medical benefit of marijuana. I do understand that, but I am personally opposed to cannabis, and I'll tell you why. I believe it would overtax our public, our resources, our police officers. I believe that we don't know... The impact is yet unknown. I don't want it for retail, for lab, or for manufacturing. I understand that Antioch City Council's approved overlay maps near Costco, near elementary schools. I strongly say that, "Let's give it 10 years and see what happens in Antioch, and then we can make that decision in Brentwood." And again, I understand this will go to the voters, and it's up to the voters of Brentwood to decide, but I am completely against cannabis at any level. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. The next question is land use. It's a pretty popular question out here in East County. What is your position on the rezone of Deer Ridge and Shadow Lakes Golf Course land to allow high-density apartments for seniors? And we'll start with Mr. Jones.
Excuse me. I'm by state. The FPC has caused me to recuse myself, so if we go through this line of questioning, I have to leave the room.
One thing the League is quite aware of is we don't ever ask for a future vote. I'm not asking whether... Is this on the agenda now for the city council? Is it an agenda item?
It has come before, and it will return.
Okay, so we're going to change the question so it's broader, so that we definitely don't want to try and solicit any votes before they come to an official vote in the city council. So let's talk about affordable housing. What is your ideas for increasing the supply of affordable housing? And we'll start with Mr. Jones.
Well, that's an interesting question because that's a subjective term. I mean, affordable now, the reason a lot of people moved to Brentwood was because you can get a good house for a decent price. Now you've got to pay $700,000 to get that same house you could get for $350,000, $400, a few years ago. So as far as low-income housing, if that's what you're asking, that's something that's a state issue. The only thing we can do is try to make sure we have as little low-income housing as possible that's, you know, legal. But nobody really wants to have low income near their neighborhood, especially if you live in a really nice neighborhood and you've paid a lot of money for your $700,000 house. And that's my say on it.
Thank you. Mr. Bryant?
Well, Mr. Jones brings a very good point out. When you ask about low income or affordable, I think the differentiation is subsidized housing, state subsidized housing versus what is affordable in this area. The median is somewhere in the neighborhood of $600,000, $625,000 right now. If we had a developer that was able to come in and build a good product for somewhere in the neighborhood of $300,000, for Brentwood, that is very affordable, and it attracts the kinds of family and community that everyone in Brentwood would like to have. I want neighbors of families. I don't necessarily want large neighborhoods that predominantly drain the resources of our law enforcement, emergency community. And so I think that if we're talking about affordable housing, I'm for finding a pathway to bring that. If we're talking about subsidized housing, I have a real challenge accepting that because there are areas that are more beneficial to families that would need that in the Bay Area than Brentwood.
Thank you. Mr. Rodriguez?
Golly, I'm just hearing. Living here as long as I have, affordable housing was at $35,000. My father bought his house here for about $30,000. If my father was to sell his house now, he'd never be able to move back to Brentwood. And I think that's very sad to say that. There's a lot of people who live in this community that helped build this community. My father was a farm worker in this community for 57 years. My mother was a farm worker. I used to see my mom work in the packing sheds and in the tomato machines. And I think affordable housing's important, but it needs to be smart as well. It needs to be really looked at. We don't want a big community that, you know, you can only move here if you have $600,000, $400,000. You know what I mean? I think that we've got to be open-minded. We've got to look at it. It's not something that I'd say that it has to happen right away, but we've got to be conscious to the people that have lived here for many years and be able to support them so they can live in a nice home, as everybody else does. And to do that, they may need affordable housing. And so for me, it's something that's really touchy because it's really sad that it takes about between $500,000 to $600,000 to live in Brentwood these days, when my father was able to move here at $30,000.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Vidriales?
I'll echo that affordable housing is a very nebulous term. It does mean different things to different people. I believe in market rate housing, let the market determine and settle in demand and supply. I do believe in loan assistance, down payment assistance programs to help a larger amount of families get into homes in Brentwood, while recognizing the need for our millennials, our children, nieces and nephews to be able to afford a home in Brentwood. But without a real clear definition of affordable housing, it's hard for me to really address that question.
And Mr. Fink?
The city of Brentwood has had an affordable housing program for a number of years. We've required developers that have built in the city of Brentwood to set aside a small percentage of houses for those that qualify for assistance in getting affordable housing. Affordable housing also means that you build a product that somebody can afford. And one of the things that we've prided ourselves on is that the city of Brentwood has good mix between low, medium, and high-density housing. And the high-density housing has a tendency to be smaller lots, smaller homes. Therefore, they're more affordable to those that can afford them. We have a number of projects that are coming up, especially one on Sand Creek Road, which was the Scortino Ranch project that was basically taken over by Polty Homes. And those will be homes that people can actually afford, and will also be part of the Brentwood city's affordable housing program, where they will be able to get additional down payment assistance money that the city has set aside for those individuals.
Thank you. Now we move on to another topic of finance, and Ms. Vidriales, you'll get the first chance to answer this question. The city of Brentwood's 2016 to 2017 annual employer contribution to CalPERS for its employee pensions was $5.4 million. CalPERS has estimated this cost will grow by 65% in 2023, '24. How will the city pay for this increase? So it's a question of cutting services or adding income somehow? So Ms. Vidriales, do you have a tack on that one?
I think the city... I know the city of Brentwood, our finance department is doing a great job of taking care of the unfunded PERS liability and the OPID liability. It's a three-tiered program. We have tiered the pension for our city employees. I believe they paid something like $12.9 billion in payout to cure the deficit. And the third tier to solve that program, I believe, is the... Oh, I'm so sorry. That escapes me at this time. So we have a three-pronged process in curing the deficit for our unfunded liabilities at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Bryant?
Well, over the last several years, the city of Brentwood benefits from having a program in our finance department that looks out 10 years in advance of all the trends, not just within the city, but also state levels like PERS. PERS, if we had a way to encourage them to make better and more sound investments, that would be terrific. But every time that a city or a community starts working toward paying unfunded liabilities, there's a way that they move the goalposts. Having said that, the employees pay a substantial amount of their... amount of their unfunded liability as well. And so we have been able to, in essence, have them quit digging a deeper hole and start paying toward the future as well. It's very important for the city of Brentwood that our retirees are able to live out their retired years without worrying about having a paycheck that they are relying on from working for the city.
Thank you. Mr. Fink?
I think the city has done an excellent job in addressing the needs of the unfunded liabilities. However, there's a lot of other issues that I feel that will impact that going along in the future. We're definitely coming up towards another recession, and we need to look really hard at the monies that we are expending in new staff and services that we could actually maybe take another look at. I know that the city has gotten more community facility district dollars than they had budgeted for, and they've been using those for other things, like the library and things like that. And I think that those monies could be set aside for additional payments to the employee benefits and unfunded liabilities. And those are numbers that we really need to take a hard look at over the next two to three years, because city services are going to be impacted as we approach our first phase of build-out.
Thank you. Mr. Rodriguez?
Could you read that question again? I apologize.
The city of Brentwood's 2016-17, so it's a year ago, annual employer contribution to CalPERS for its employee pensions is $5.4 million. CalPERS has estimated this cost will grow by 65% in the 2023-24 year. How will the city pay for this increase? So it's a question of cutting services, adding income somehow?
Yeah. You know, sitting on the school board, you know, these are things that always come up, right, in regards to staff and employees and things like that. And I'll be honest with you, when I got on the school board, it was something I had to take some time to learn. It was a learning process. I don't think, for me, to understand that currently at this moment, I really don't in regards to the city, but I'm hoping to be able to work with the city manager, the city council, the staff, to be able to learn more about this issue, and hopefully be able to make, like I said earlier, some good, the right decisions when it comes to this topic.
Thank you. And Mr. Jones?
So I'm going to put it in simple layman terms. We need more revenue. Anybody knows at home, you have expenses that go up every year, and they keep going up, usually to rate higher than what you're getting paid. A lot of times, the only way that you can make a significant increase in your income is to go get another job somewhere else that's going to pay you a lot more. Well, I think it's the same thing here. At some point, it's going to come to a head, and if we don't have a plan in advance that says, "Let's build out PA1, let's bring these corporate jobs here, let's bring that corporate money here to add to our piggy bank," we're going to be in trouble in 10 years. So that's the end of it, just revenue. We need more revenue. We need to find new sources of revenue that don't tax our citizens additionally.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Rodriguez, you can have the first crack at this one. The city's general plan says that 911 calls will be responded to in three to four minutes or less within the city limits. 911 calls from Brentwood residents to the East Contra Costa Fire Protection District are, on average, responded to in seven to seven and a half minutes. Does the city have a plan to improve emergency response times?
I'll be honest, I went on a ride along the other day, and I'll be honest with you, a lot of our, all of our resources when it comes to these things are really sad, to be honest with you. We were a couple of accidents, and we didn't even have enough fire department to assist. One of the things that I'm looking forward to is, in regards to this, though, there's going to be a couple of meetings that are going to be happening, workshops, October 16th and November 14th, and they're going to be creating the strategic plans in regards to these issues in the fire, and working on how can we be able to be more efficient in supporting our community and the residents in this community. So it's very important that, like myself and others, attend those meetings, to really hope that there's a strategic plan that will be successful to help our community in regards to emergencies and things like that. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Mr. Fink?
Can I get a clarification on the question? Are we talking about response times for police? Are we talking about response time for fire? Or are we talking about both?
The question was 911 calls from Brentwood to the East Contra Costa County, or East Contra Costa Fire Protection District are, on average, responded to in seven to seven and a half minutes. So it's fire, and that's medical emergency.
Okay. When the dispatch center was originally proposed, it was something that I was very excited to hear about. However, I know that there's been a struggle with staffing, and I know that that's something that the police department is working on in order to get those response times to be better. The simple fact is, is that if the response times are low, it's because, and specifically to fire, is that we don't have the personnel in order to respond quickly, which of course is the bigger picture that everybody is asking about, you know, what do we do about fire? What do we do about the response times? There are a number of issues that are on the table in order to deal with fire, but I also feel that those definitely have needs that need to be, they need to be addressed. And when they need to be addressed, they could be among a whole different myriad of things between, yes? No, go ahead. What's that? Oh, okay.
All right. Thank you. You can catch up later. Ms. Vidriales?
So I have the full faith in our East Contra Costa Fire Protection Board that they're working on solving this issue. Chief Helmick has been in place for about 17 months, and I know that they're working diligently to cure these problems. I get that the response times are perhaps even 10 minutes, something that we need, Brentwood as a city, we need to voice our opinion and let the Fire Protection Board know that it's a huge concern of ours, and we have a lot at stake, family lives at stake. I also think that we need to get that Sand Creek Road open to lessen the time it takes to get from, let's say, Trilogy or Somerset through to Sutter or to Kaiser. And those are things that I know that are in the works that will improve our response times.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
So for me, obviously, fire is a really, really big issue. Everybody knows that, and most people that are in the mix know that there's no easy solution. So anybody that tells you otherwise, they're not telling the truth. End of the day, we need more revenue, and we also need fresh ideas. So that's one of the reasons I hope to get on council, thinking outside of the box, throw out ideas, brainstorm with other folks that are, you know, intelligent people here in Brentwood that we have, and come with a solution.
Thank you. Mr. Bryant?
Well, it's important to understand that the 911 calls to police and 911 calls to fire are separate entities. The city of Brentwood is a part of a fire district, although we do provide most of the revenue that goes into that district because we require most of their services. Having a faster response time is really based upon resources. As a city, we're able to put some, in the process of the plan that Chief Helmick and the cities are working with the district to implement, the city of Brentwood is able to provide a couple of more fire houses, and we're working on a process to put bodies in those houses so that we can reopen the firehouse downtown, that we can put another one out near Shady Willow area. That's already in the city's plan, and we're in the process of making that functional, so that we can keep everybody as safe as possible, as long as possible.
Thank you. Mr. Bryant, you can be first. What would be your top priority if elected or reelected?
Well, my top priority is encompassing the entire quality of life in Brentwood. I want to keep everybody very safe. I want to keep our schools to the level that they are quality-wise. I want to keep our resources as fast to respond as possible. I want to keep our families, neighbors, friends, I want our kids to be able to walk down the street safely. I want to attract a lot of high-paying, quality jobs, to reverse a commute, to end a commute, to keep our families here, so that the quality of life can improve, and the home lives can improve as well, so that our kids don't feel like they have to raise each other or let social media do that for them.
Ms. Vidriales?
Well, I will echo the quality of life, because that's all-encompassing. That includes our public safety, our economic development, our infrastructure. I too want to bring high-paying jobs, technical jobs, to Brentwood. I too want to ensure that our police officers are taken care of and given the tools and resources that they need to give us, to extend the level of customer service that we're all accustomed to. I agree that we have some traffic and congestion problems in Brentwood that need to be dealt with. And as I said, all of that falls under the umbrella of quality of life in Brentwood, which, again, we all love, and that would be my goal on City Council, to continue to protect and enhance the quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rodriguez?
Yeah, I would have to echo everything they said. I think that I agree with that. But I also know there's a huge piece of our community that's not being represented, and I think that's our youth, our young people. I think that we do very well with the senior center, and it's done a wonderful job. Actually, we've outgrown the senior center. I mean, we have about 1,000 people that are signed up at the senior center, and we need to look at expanding that. I think we do a wonderful job when it comes to K to 5th grade, kindergarten to 5th grade, but there's that gap, and that gap we're missing is our middle schools and our high schools. I think the community needs to look at possibly bringing a center, a youth center, you know, collaborating and partnering with YMCA or the Boys and Girls Clubs. But I think a lot of times that we focus on all these other things, that we're getting to focus on our young leaders that are coming through this community, that are hopefully going to be the next city council members, school board members, things like that, like myself, that grew up in this community. So I would like to see this community invest more time and effort within our youth.
Thank you. Mr. Fink?
I have had the honor of being on the Planning Commission for the last eight years, and I have helped with my fellow commissioners to maintain the quality of life that we have here in Brentwood and keep this, the beautiful city that it is, in concert with the City Council. My top priority, if I'm elected, is we need to look at our future, and we need to look at it very quickly, because we are about four to four and a half years away from our first phase of our build-out, and we're going to have to make some serious decisions on whether or not we're going to need to look at city services based on the fact that we're not going to be having the development that we're used to seeing, and/or we're going to be looking at possibly an urban limit line adjustment to the west side of town, which is part of the general plan that we did on the update in 2013 and '14. So that will be my top priority, is to continue to secure the prosperity of this city going forward into my candidacy.
Thank you. And Mr. Jones?
So again, my top priority is economic development and bringing jobs here. I think that's very important. We talk about different parts of our Brentwood population. It's probably a third to a half of our population who get up at 5:00 in the morning and get home at 6:00 or 7:00. That's not quality of life. Again, I've been there. Being able to have those two or three extra hours back in your day and not spend that $18,000 to $25,000 a year in commuting costs, it can make a huge difference in your life and quality of life. So that's what I'm going to do.
Thank you very much. Now, I'm afraid we've come to the end of our question-and-answer period for this evening, and I apologize if I didn't ask your question, because I was asking someone else's. There were too many questions for the time we had. Possibly you could stay after and ask your question to the candidates, if they could stay a few minutes. Now, each candidate will have one minute for a closing statement, and we'll go in reverse order from where we started. So the first speaker is Mike Jones.
Well, I'm just going to say, thank all of you for coming out. Thank you for listening to us. Thank you to the other candidates for having this forum and having this campaign run that we're doing. I think it's healthy for Brentwood, and I think ultimately, almost anybody up here, any of us get on council, it's not anything bad about it. These are all really good people.
Thank you. John Fink?
I echo Mike's comments. I think any one of us would definitely serve the community well, and that's what we're here for. This is not an easy job, being out there in the public like this and being and wanting to lead a city. But we definitely have a great thing here in Brentwood, and I want to continue to keep that going. As your planning commissioner for the last eight years, I've been a part of all of the wonderful things, including the library. I was so excited when it opened on Saturday. I remember seeing the plans from the beginning all the way through the end, and I was involved in that process, and it was really exciting. And that's something that I want to continue to serve this community in the capacity that I have in the last eight years, and be able to do more that, of these types of things that helps to keep this Brentwood community thriving and growing into the future.
Thank you. Johnny Rodriguez?
God, when I was asked why I was running, it was like, it started 25 years ago. You know, this is just part of the process. This is a journey that's been developed for many, many years. You know, first, you know, growing up in this community, building an organization, being recognized as a Cesar Chavez Award winner, Martin Luther King Award winner, Juvenile Justice Award winner, being on the school board, all these different things. And to me, it was almost one of those things where I have to run. It was one of those things, I need to represent the community. I need to be part of the community. I've been invested for so many years. So for me, I hope that, one, that I could be on the city council and be a part of this process, and be able to hopefully make a change within the whole community. One of the other things that encouraged me was when I found out that the majority of our board and people running live in Shadow Lakes, and honestly, I think to represent the whole community, there needs to be a diverse community when it comes to representing this community.
Thank you very much. Olga Vidriales?
Thank you. I've been asked quite often what my motivation for running is, and it's purely my passion for Brentwood. I love this city. I loved it ever since we moved here in 2003, coming from Hayward. Maybe it was a culture shock, but it's a great one. This is a great city to live in. I offer you a fresh and new perspective, dedication and lots of hard work. I have a lot to learn, but I'm up for the challenge. If you want diversity, what more diversity than do you have in me, a Latina female, coming from Hayward, from a background, a childhood growing up, that would not lend itself to where I am today, sitting before you and asking you to elect me as city council. I'm proud to live in Brentwood. I understand what it takes. I understand why people want to move here, and I want to promote and protect our quality of life. I would appreciate your consideration and support, and I would ask that you would vote for me for city council. Thank you.
Thank you. And Joel Bryant?
Well, I've been on council for eight years, and in that time, I've seen a lot of growth, a lot of change, and a lot of improvement. And really, I just genuinely love Brentwood, love the city of it, of Brentwood. I loved working with the Brentwood Police Department as a chaplain, with the families at some of their worst times of their lives. And I've become very, very much in love with not just the city of Brentwood as a whole, but our individual communities and people. We have great people here. And having been a part of the decision-making process for the last eight years, I want to continue to move that forward in a solid way, so that in 50 years from now, 100 years from now, all of the community is able to look back and say, "These are decisions that were steadfast, they were reliable, and they moved us all forward into an area that we're happy we are right now." And so, having said that, I would really appreciate the opportunity to continue to serve you as a community on your city council.
Thank you very much. I want to thank the Contra Costa Libraries, the Elections Department, and CCTV for cosponsoring tonight's forum, to thank you for your respectful attention. I especially want to thank your candidates who've offered their service, their ideas, and their commitment. Be sure to vote on November 6 or earlier, and these are your five candidates for two seats on the Brentwood City Council. Let's give them a hand.